I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have previous minutes, students and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than sixty minutes. We'll have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, personnel agenda, consent agenda, we will have a second executive session, and then we will adjourn the meeting. Do you have a motion for previous minutes? Motion to approve previous minutes. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What did I miss? Oh, do I need that? I apologize, I made a mistake. After our consent agenda, we do have an addendum. And then we will adjourn to executive session. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Okay, open to the public. Who would like to speak? Okay?
Over there.
That'd be great.
I'm Jim Unger, haven't been here for awhile, had a little bit of failing health and stuff, so I apologize, I can only see Mr. Zoff, and I can only know him, so if I miss him, I'm sorry. I, just being at the meeting tonight, I had two comments on your evaluation system. I think since you're gonna have these student goals, I'd be very interested on how those goals are set. In other words, are the teachers just setting them, or are the students actually involved in setting the goals with the teachers? Also, I'm not sure how you're going to initially measure them coming into school, what your lag time's gonna be, but I think if you're gonna have some good buy-in, also good leadership, you would sit there and involve the students actually in defining those performance objectives, so they have something to shoot for. Likewise, with the administrators, I think it would behoove you if you also included not only student performance in that, but also the teacher performance in the building. That way, that's more of a buy-in to the system that everybody's looking to succeed, not just, hey, if you get an ineffective, we're developing, you know, that's your problem. Because, you know, I've experienced things in New York City, and we all know Charlotte Danielson had to show up and say, my thesis, my rubric is being misused and abused. So, and again, I've been out of state going on for a little bit, and I'm kinda surprised that actually the regents are actually using that rubric, because it's pretty generic, but if they are, they are. I really came here tonight to make a recommendation, two recommendations, so let me get to the first one, the easy one, because, you know, my wife, she works for Xerox, and I just wanted to mention, they have a new thing coming out called Xerox Ignite. And I don't know if you need a Xerox multi-function machine or what, but what it enables you to do, if you're a teacher, it allows you to just put in your student work, whether it's homework or tests, and it will, and this is not like standardized filling bubbles and stuff, it can actually read and decipher writing in different places on the page and stuff, but it will automatically grade the paper for you, as long as you kinda put in the key, I'm not sure how the system works, but you may wanna get with a rep just to see that, just to see how it works, because if they're doing it, someone else is eventually gonna be doing it too, so there's gonna be competition, but it in effect lets you grade a whole class load of papers instead of like an hour, it just turns it into twenty minutes of getting it into the machine, and that way, your teacher is able to look at things from outside, not be involved in the after grading, actually looking at the data, and then being able to make decisions on that, so that's a big advantage. The real reason I came tonight is, you may wanna get a free, some free books. I was recently in Kuwait at a British school, and I've been teaching middle school math in New York City for the last ten years or so, and then I went to Kuwait for a couple months, and unfortunately, because of my medical stuff, I had to come back early. But there's a company called Collins, so, and they're going to a beta site, so it's beta dot Collins, just like you would expect, C-O-L-L-I-N-E-S dot co dot U.K., and you can get some free series books, so middle school would be K-Stage Three or KS Three, and these are the best books or series I've seen out of any curriculum anywhere, and I've seen a lot of different curriculums. It was nice, it had canned lesson, it had the lesson plans all done out for you, the material, it's the first bona fide textbook that I saw where it actually did spiral, and it was designed that way, and it's very straightforward, CDs for everything that you need, there's different amount of materials that you can buy, but they offer free kits, but you have to be aligned with school, and that's why I can't give you any of those myself, because I'm not aligned right now. So, but, yeah, I think the best thing about that series that I could mention was typically, if you're teaching, you know, one of the things you wanna do is preactivation at the start of the lesson, and they actually had that already canned, and in fact, that would take sometimes a whole period, and the kids were still entertained, and the one thing I'd tell you is, there's not too much difference between kids in Kuwait and kids in Spanish Harlem, except that the kids in Kuwait are filthy rich, because they all have drivers and they all have maids, but the personalities are pretty much the same and stuff, so, okay, thank you, and I'm gonna leave because of my health, I'm sorry, I'd like to stay, but Montana Ice foot, my health, so, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Who else like?
Ask our community member. Dr. Dorwood, I have a couple of questions for you on your presentation. First one's like part A, pardon me. With the SLOs being developed at fifty percent plus one, of the teacher, of what the teacher teaches, so we'll say like in the local chemistry class, ChemCon, if you have two teachers where that fifty percent plus one are teaching ChemCon, are the SLOs going to be developed, you know, together, between those two teachers collaboratively? And, second part of that question is, they have monthly assessments, will they also be developed collaboratively between those two teachers? So there's continuity in teaching that subject matter to those students? So, for example, if student A has been moved into the, into teacher B's class, they're gonna be all on the same page, learning the same material?
Do you have any questions, or you want me to?
That is a question. You want them all at one time, or?
No, I just didn't know what you were doing. So, relative to the SLOs, the way the regulations read, I have to assure that the assessments that are used are what's referred to as common, rigorous, so common would mean, if we're using an assessment for fourth grade, it's gotta be the same assessment, or if it's for her science, it has to be the same assessment. The way the SLOs are structured, they would be based off of the same assessment, but because we're doing individualized targets, and they have different students in their classes, obviously, they're not necessarily gonna end up with the same targets, I don't know if you understand what I'm referring to there about the individualized targets.
Well, they're gonna have common assessments, though, correct?
The assessments are supposed to be common, yes, and rigorous.
Maybe like pre-test, post-test?
Right, right. And then, of course, the assessments are aligned with whatever the curriculum is for that subject area. And relative to the other assessments, I don't know that it's, historically has been a requirement that all the assessments be the same, and that's not part of what we've been working on, to have the assessments throughout the year be all the same.
Okay. Isn't that kinda counterproductive, though, in case, you know, if you're looking to see, you know, not just the classrooms growth, but that population in that course, their growth, you know, collectively?
What you're really referring to is more like a benchmark type assessment system, and I think that we ultimately would probably move towards that, but I don't know that you necessarily have to have the same assessments all throughout the year, you're basically just kinda periodically making sure that they're in alignment with their counterparts in the classes.
Okay. The next question is, is student attendance and dropout rate, or dropouts, are they gonna be held against the individual teachers, in terms of their growth?
For student attendance, the state actually factors in attendance into the growth score. It's not part of our internal plan relative to the SLOs, but the, you know, I have to forgive me, I don't have the exact figures, but the, as they are tracking individual students, and then how that student's grade impacts the final growth score that's assigned to an individual teacher, they do factor in attendance.
And my final question for you is, for the administrators who are not building principals or APs, and I'll use Eric as an example, are their scores at sixty percent, is that gonna be tied into the ELA and math scores as well? Or is that only for the building principals?
It's, well, I think we've all gotten kinda used to referring to the APPR system. Obviously, we had observation evaluation systems in place before that system was imposed upon us by the state, but that system that we're referring to applies to building principals and teachers, not even all the teachers, some of the teachers don't necessarily have the right configuration, or people in the teachers' union don't necessarily fall under the APPR system.
So how you measure that, the other six percent for administrators, they're not responsible for the ELA and math growth in the building?
They wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate to refer to the other sixty percent, they would just fall under the previous eight observation, shouldn't even say observation, because observation is something that's part of the new system. So it'd be the previous evaluation system that's in place for the administrator, it wouldn't, it's not in the same structure of sixty points for observation, twenty for state, twenty for local, that's not how it's set up.
No, I understood that, I mean, but for the administrators, they have one sixty percent?
For the building principals.
Right, okay. But you had stated it as being the administrators?
I'm sorry, I missed what you said, it applies to building principals.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Kenya Gadsden. I just had a question about locally developed controls, based on students with disabilities, how are we categorizing that, and for students in poverty, how are we categorizing that? Like, where do those categories come from when you do disabilities?
So when you're, when you're looking in this, what's referred to as the student information system, student information system is where we house all the demographic and other information about the students, so for example, if a student receives free or reduced lunch, in that system, there would be a categorization that the state uses to consider them to be a student that comes from an economically disadvantaged population. That's, if you look on the school report card at the, on the state end website, you'll see that category, economically disadvantaged, that's referring to. And then, of course, with the students with disabilities, that would be also a designation that's just within the IP system. Those, if you look at the areas which we can consider for, for consideration in that area that I was referring to, the state actually gives you a narrow window that you can consider, so economically disadvantaged, students with IPs, I think attendance is in there if you chose to use it, but that's a very small set of, I think, four, maybe five areas.
So when you're saying disabilities, would it include like the 504 students, IEP students, spectrum students, is that what we're looking for? Because like, I work with adults who are intellectually disabled, and one of the things that are happening to us in my field, is pretty much they're trying to group us underneath the mental health law, but parents who have individuals who are diagnosed with autism really don't want their kids to be grouped with people who have mental health issues. And then people who have children who are intellectually disabled don't want their kids grouped with people who have mental health issues. Because when you look at all three in the pyramid, they all have different criteria, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the district is actually using.
So the, I guess the best way to answer that is that, the state has a whole slew, I mean, in the hundreds, I think, of different categories of information that they require us to keep for our students, and you know that we upload information to the data warehouse, I think those issues have come up in the time that I've been here. So, we have to follow the SERES manual, which basically defines, defines those various descriptions and whether or not a person belongs in a particular category. So once again, if you look at the school report card, they break out as one of the subgroup students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and there's other subcategories within there, but it's not internally defined, we have to follow the outline that the state gives us.
Right, but if they give you twenty-five options, the school doesn't have to utilize all twenty-five, you would use what the school believes to be applicable to that particular situation. So if you have autism spectrum, and you have 504, and you have IEP, right, then you throw in somebody with mental health issues who can actually merge into the school system. You don't necessarily have to use all four of them, you can choose. So if you're gonna choose what categories you place under disabilities, how do you come up with that?
Yeah, so, here's, here's one of, you're getting into an area that I don't necessarily have the answer for, because I believe, I don't know the degree to which we have discretion, I think that there's areas where there's, there's fields that we have to fill in, and I'm not, I can't tell you for sure that it is discretionary, or it may very well be that we have to fill in, depending upon whatever their student circumstances. I don't know that it's discretionary. I don't know that it's not, but I don't know that it is.
So who would know that and when? Like, is that like something that's possible? And I'm asking just because?
Certainly, I can, I can ask that question of our data people, and if that's something that is discretionary, or if it has to be followed from the manual that the state provides to us.
Because part of my problem is that when I, you know, I don't wanna call you up, or call Mr. Tim, and come to your office and spend time there, because I realize, when I look at all of what I ask, right, there's a whole lot of information there, and so pretty much coming to your office is gonna really waste your time, because it's not gonna give me ample amount of time to really figure out what I'm really trying to ask you. And so I don't like to do things, you know, prematurely, and so I continue to ask the same, you know, like questions of issues, and it's always, there's really no real answer, like I'm borderline, and I get confused by that, but I guess I'll stay confused.
No, I mean, I can, I can, I don't have the answer for you, I'm sorry, it's, you're asking a very detailed, intricate question, I could certainly ask of a data person, and either I can come prepared at the next meeting to answer it, or if you wanna give me a call, I just, I don't have that answer.
And then, when I, when I look at, you know, I still go back to the accountability report, when I'm reviewing the accountability report, and I'm looking at some of the plans that are developed, there's very specific information in the accountability report that hasn't really specifically been addressed in, you know, like, I'm gonna say, in terms of the plan, hasn't been specifically addressed, and I always go back to the issue where you see that when they break everything down, it's based on race, and the amount of students that actually participated, and it continues to baffle me, because I can't find it anywhere, why African-American students continue to do well, but don't graduate after four years, or continually do well, and don't graduate after five years? And you consistently see throughout this accountability report, where Caucasian students won't be doing well, but they don't drop out. So I continue to be baffled, and I keep asking people, like, why is that? And no one really can give me that answer, but there are a lot of people in this community who struggle with trying to find out what's the core of that problem. So when I look at that issue, and I look at issues of, I'm gonna say answers being said in a vague way, right, because not everybody comes here, I think that we're always gonna continue to be reactive to a lot of things that are going on here, and at the same token, lose our students, because that's what's happening. No one can tell me why these kids who are doing well, whether they're black, white, orange, or green, and they drop out, and no one can't tell me why these kids who are struggling, when you're struggling, you're kinda discouraged to just leave, but they don't leave and they stay.
Well, so, I mean, you're asking a general question, but I can speak from my experience when I was a building principal, I think what you're attempting to do is draw a connection between a student's ability to do well, and whether or not they stay in school, or a student that struggles, and maybe has a long history of struggling, but somehow managed to make it through, and what I can tell you from my own personal experience as a principal is, it's not a straight connection. There was many instances where we had kids that I knew had performed very well, maybe in the earlier grade levels, or certainly had the ability or aptitude to perform well, and it was other things that ultimately led them to be a dropout, or a serious risk of being a dropout. By the same token, I had a number of students who struggled, and for a variety of reasons, whether it be, you know, just their internal desire to ultimately get through, or parent support, or teacher support, that they may have struggled all the way through, and they may have been borderline sixty-five the whole way, but they managed to make it through. So, it's not always the fact that they don't have the ability to do well that causes somebody to drop out.
Mike, do you have any insight to offer to this question?
Well, as to the issue of students with disabilities, I believe that the way we should define students with educational disabilities under IDPA, that they either are, they are, they either have a classification under IDPA, one of thirteen separate classifications, or they do not, if they do have one of those classifications, then they are considered a student with disability for purposes of that adjustment under IDPA.
But the question she's asking, is there any discretion in how you categorize them?
I don't think the district's involved in that.
It's not, right?
The district's not involved in determining.
So it's just?
Students with disabilities, it's based on?
Data.
Data from the state.
Thank you. And the last thing I just have to say is, I have a child who's in the middle school, and yes, that individual does not involve anything negative, however negative things are happening at the school, and I worry that the suspension rate, I think it decreased, so I'm wondering if these kids are being allowed to stay that have committed these acts, or is there some fine line of rules and regulations that would say, if you punch somebody in the eye, you're suspended, but then at the end of that, if that child doesn't have a parent who's involved, then we keep them in the school, because if we send them outside, they're kinda left to themselves? So I wanna know what the rules are, because the things that are happening are very scary, and although it's not affecting much how physically, it is affecting the operations here in the building, and the students and the teachers, so, you know, this is like, this is scary for me, this is like South Bronx, so to speak, and I didn't move up here to pay taxes for my house, to have to worry about, you know, my son or my daughter's witnessing violent acts, and this is happening, and I find that we're very reactive instead proactive. I have been rallying for consistent assemblies, because I think these, the kids need to hear that there's a punishment, no disrespect to Mr. Soltes, because I think that he is definitely trying to send that message to the students, but he also has to work with the confines of the rules and regulations to ensure that his students are educated, so when he's giving this lesson on lack of committing violent acts, he's taking away from what we have to do in the classrooms. But this is serious, the other day, I was traumatized by what happened outside of the school, and keeping in mind that I know that on Saturday and Friday nights, and Sunday evenings, whatever happens at home, the easiest way to get somebody is to come to school, so I get that too, but is the school equipped with enough, you know, manpower to man the building? Is some of the questions that has to be raised. And if you don't have kids here yourself, you know, consider that the jobs or roles that you have is concerning the safety of all these kids, whether they're yours or not. So, you know, if there's a parent out there who's not advocating for safety here, or increased security, or support systems to Mr. Soltes and his team, then, and I do that on behalf of those kids who don't have anybody ask it, but this is not a safe situation, and it doesn't promote an environment where, you know, growth and development in the brain, it promotes different kind of strategies that scare you. So what is the district's, you know, position on categories of acts of violence and suspension levels, why it's going down, but the acts are still happening?
So, part of what Mr. Soltes was referring to, last week was a tough week, all the way around, and, but I, about a week or so before that, I had, there was a different issue going on, and I had asked Mr. Soltes to sorta report out to me how we were doing as of that point in time, relative to in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, number of superintendents hearings, and so on, and what the data showed, and nothing's ever a perfect straight line, but by and large, what I can tell you is that the overall numbers of out-of-school suspensions were down, and the number of superintendents hearings were down. I think, you know, we've, there's been a lot more in the last week or so, but when I have conversations with him about, okay, what do you attribute that to, part of what he talked to me about, he had been taking a proactive approach, so I know that they had had student assemblies where they talked about his expectations for correct behaviors, and you heard him make reference to the fact that he's gonna be kinda coming back, because we're coming off a stretch here where behaviors aren't what we want them to be, both in and outside of school, he was intending to have a refresher for the students after the holidays, when he's kinda got them back and settled, settled back in. So, I think that the numbers were down, I believe, because of the efforts of Mr. Soltes and the programs that he's putting into place.
Well, I'm not knocking his efforts at all, because I'll call Mr. Soltes myself and tell him, thank you, like that happened to be happening in the school here, but what I'm saying is that he can't really do it by himself, and his team can't do it by themselves, so that has to take, you have to take a look, the increased security cameras that they have, it's still not a preventive measure, the bullying is still not a preventive measure, so you have to take a look at the core of the problem. So there are kids here who have to really teach and raise themselves, and they may be the problem, there also may be kids who live at home and have everything that their parent may think they have, and they too may be the problem, but I think we have to assess what the problem is. I don't know if the district wants to wait for that crisis to have been a different turnout, I don't, I don't know. And it didn't happen on school property, but those were students in our schools, so the likelihood of that happening in this building all depends on the circumstance of the situation, that's what it does, and so, I don't wanna be the parent on the flip side of that, getting a call with something like that happening, and so, I'm gonna say that this is not just Mr. Soltes and his team's fight, I think there has to be a closer look, I think that the district and all of the rules state that we're trying to become more community connected and involved, I think we literally need to do that, so that you have people who can talk to the kids and understand them in a language that they understand, because I think when you're talking adequate, you're talking to yourself, but when you're creating dialogue, and you understand where they come from and where they've been, then you have a better leg to stand on, and I think Kevin and his team do an excellent job of trying to get that, but they can't get it by themselves. So, they need help. And my last thing is, is that Mr. Soltes, I don't really want him to get ran over by any cars outside, so he needs a, he needs like a walkway, because the new dismissal system that they have is excellent, it brings down the crisis and the fights that happen in the school, only the busing kids go in the busing area, all the walkers go somewhere else. However, some of the parents don't get that there's kids walking, and some of the kids don't get that there's cars coming, so if there was a street or a walkway, the kids could walk on that, and parents would know that they can't drive there, so can we assess whether he can get that?
Through the parking lot?
It's in the back, like off of the drip, right? Yeah. So, so I'll keep asking for that from Mr. Soltes, until we possibly put in a budget he can get it, for safety reasons for him.
So, been coming?
You mean back by the park?
Yeah, Memorial Park areas, where a lot of the walkers go out, and they walk down, so I can't really drive.
And some parents pick their kids up back there, rather than come through the kiosk area where it's jam-packed.
And it's on the?
The kids are walking, and the car's driving.
It's the park, it's city property, right?
Road is city property.
Right behind you.
Money to close mine in the city, because I could do that too.
It's city property.
Alright, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I was at the high school last Saturday, and I saw the play Aladdin.
I'll just talk about it. I was, uh, at the high school last Saturday and I saw the play Aladdin. It was very well performed. However, I was sitting next to a teacher's assistant, a teacher's aide was sitting next to me. And before the play started, a lot of her students came up to say hi to her. They were surprised she was there at the play. And I looked at the students with the twinkle and the glee in their eye that she was there. And they looked up to her. And they trusted her. Her confidence exudes from herself. And the students recognize that. So do you believe, as I believe, any one of those students in her class, if anything went wrong, do you believe they would be hesitant to tell her? I don't think they would, I think they'd tell her. If anything was about too bad, was that to happen, they would, they would, they would tell her. So I'm going to go off a trail on Ms. Jackson's comments, some of them. We have all these security cameras up. What are they doing? We still don't follow Project Save. We haven't had a public hearing in I don't know how long that we're supposed to have it. We don't have mock drills in the city under Project Save. And the students bringing box cutters into forest of school and there's a stabbing on Main Street. What the hell is going on? Come out of your office once in a while and go down to these schools and visit and talk to these kids. Not all day long, but you can go say, hey, what's going on? Show yourself, you're a fingerhead here. They look at you as that. They look at you, they, they look up to you, they respect you. Went to these schools and let them see you once in a while. You might hear something. You might be able to prevent something, you never know. Now, the reason why we're, we're here, that was some comments I wanted to touch on. I visited Wapingers and I visited Van Wick, Junior High School relating to Common Core. And as a resident who was sitting in the auditorium with no kids in any school district, why am I there? Either one, I'm a pain in the ass or number two, I really care about students, no matter where you go and what you do. Confining the law. A lot of parents are fed up with it. Don't like it. I know you've heard these stories before. So I'm just echoing what's been said or what's going to be said or what already has been said recently. So I was sitting there in these auditoriums listening carefully. And, Madam President, I did see you there at Van Wick, you were sitting three rows in Philemon. And it disgusts me how when Albany says to big city schools, jump, we only ask two things, when and how high? Why do we do that? Students aren't learning from Common Core. But yet it's being shoved down our throats to learn it, isn't it? The state sets a bar up here and we have to jump to it. Where's our backbone here, folks? Where's our backbone? Do we have one? Give me a telephone, give me an office. I disagree with the data being stored. It's not safe being stored the data. It can be hacked. I know you know that. Christopher Teakin, he's the professor of education administration in New Jersey, says the one-size learning doesn't work. National standards take control away from parents. But we're baking, whatever the state says, we're going to jump, right? He also says there's no, there's no research to back up Common Core's effectiveness, no research whatsoever. So in closing, I'd like to say, if we as a district decide to follow Common Core, the only thing I believe we're looking at is dollar signs on our students' foreheads and in their eyes and not a learning education that they can graduate from. That's why I'm here tonight. And if I have to continue to go to Common Core seminars and give my, and give my, uh, concerns regarding Common Core, I'm going to continue to do it. A lot of Common Core students are getting physically sick. I might've said that last night, let me say it again. Physically sick. So how do you test physically sick students on Common Core? How much medical staff do you need to hire to get the physically sick kids okay to test? So now you're hiring and hiring and hiring and you're getting nowhere. You're running on a treadmill with Common Core. We, we, we need, we suggest we need to lose Common Core quickly and stop listening to Albany. I, 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 don't get me wrong, I understand they send down the standards, but if no one's learning from Common Core, how do we follow it? I, I heard horror stories of Wapingers and Van Wick folks, horror stories. Students that were passing, now they're failing. And you know what? Their sense of of a person is going away. And I was there at Van Wick to our, to hear the, uh, assembly of people present that meeting. I said, I hope you're listening. Cause if Common Core stays, you're not going to have a job in 2014. You do what we tell you to do. We elected you, we're, we're your boss. Bottom line, we are. You don't throw nothing on us that we can't learn from. Who are you anyway? Who do you think you are? Thanks for your time, folks.
Would anyone else like to speak?
So, uh, actually I had, uh, two things that I wanted to comment on. Uh, first is, uh, on the agenda, you'll be asked to approve the ABPR plan. Um, you know, there's been an awful lot of work that's gone into the creation of the plan and working out the kinks here in the last several months. Um, my intent is, uh, assuming the board approves the plan, uh, in the week that we come back from the break, there'll be a presentation to all the teachers, uh, of the new plan and a chance for them to ask questions and then saying to the administrators, um, so that we can continue to move on, move forward with the, with a new plan. Additionally, I wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Saltis. Uh, as you know, in the, in the district plan that was approved, uh, several months ago, there's, uh, two provisions which I think sort of come to mind as he was doing his presentation tonight. One is that we're trying to take a more proactive approach, uh, on student discipline and also the community engagement piece. And part of what he talked about there, I think, uh, he's, he's making efforts, um, having the presentations on appropriate student behaviors and the bull, and anti-bullying. Uh, but in addition, holding the parent nights and trying to get the parents in. And I would echo what he had said during his comments that we want the parents to come to those meetings so that they have a chance to hear, um, what they can do in their role, uh, to help, uh, help the students to perform better. Uh, and to knock down on those, uh, those issues that we don't want to see in school. So thank you to Mr. Saltis.
Correspondence and board comments? I would just like to say, how about that play? Um, I'm sure many of us were there and I, um, I was there on Sunday with my eleven-year-old daughter and her eyes were, you know, like saucers. Um, just seeing those elephants come down the aisles was overwhelming to her. And just such a treat for all of us in the community to really enjoy our kids and their talents and the adults that are, are really instilling in them the pride that they have for the work that they're doing. So kudos to, uh, Mr. Divine and Mr. Skroom and all of those, um, that worked to put that production on. What a great job they did. Um, I'd just like to touch on, Mr. Pavlov made a comment that he saw me, um, at the Common Core presentation at Van Wick Junior High. Um, I was there and I was at the commissioner's talk at Spackenkill High School. And I think I attend those functions because if I'm going to sit in this seat to do justice to the position I have here, it's important that my eyes and ears are open. So I attend those functions, um, I do not speak at them. My whole intent of being there is to learn more and to understand people. And anytime, and we've had people at meetings that have had questions and, and I'm open to talking with anyone because I need to better understand. Mr. Saltis made, um, part of his presentation being on the honor roll tonight, um, in the training, I attended training, probably more than a month ago. And they told us that in the training, that the children that they expected would be hardest hit by the implementation of Common Core were our middle level students, our fifth and sixth grade, fifth, sixth and seventh grade students. Um, because they had started at a, you know, um, learning in a different way and, and it ramped up for them at a crucial time. But how many students did you say were on the sixth grade honor roll?
I think about a hundred and thirty.
They were the biggest?
Yes.
And I.
The largest number.
And how many are in that class?
About two hundred and thirty-five.
So more than half. More than half have a better than eighty-five average and I think that's a great job. And while obviously there's a lot of work to be done, but we're doing great work. And our children are in good hands. And I thank all of our staff for working hard for those children. Did anyone else have any comments? We'll move on to the personnel agenda, may have a motion.
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, items A through J as attached.
Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda items twelve point zero two through twelve point zero nine.
Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, motion to appoint Joseph Woolley as here in the office.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. May have a motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming out.